Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mission statement?
Richmond Community, whoops, I'm sorry, Deb. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide equality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Roll call.
Deb Michon?
I'm attending in person, City of Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. Angela Pacito?
Attending in person in Richmond City, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. I am in person, City of Richmond, Macomb Township, Michigan. Kyle Simmons will be joining us later with notice. Danielle Sutton?
I am in person in Richmond and Macomb County.
Thank you. Margaret Tullto?
I am in person in City of Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. And Sheri Zubey?
I am in person, Richmond, Macomb County, Michigan.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I am looking for a motion at this time to approve the agenda.
I motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have support for this motion?
Support.
Brian, any information on this one?
Just the board, the personnel report that was in front of you is the one that will be part of the official minutes. We had to add a retirement. You can see on the retirement, I don't know if this person has officially announced their retirement to staff, so I hesitated at this moment to release her name. I mean, it's public. She did submit it this weekend, so I wanted to at least give her the option of letting her staff know, but she will be greatly missed. I sent her a short little email over the weekend. She's been an outstanding person. Brian Shorman did resign from the varsity football assistant coach. The, I had no questions regarding the board meeting minutes from the 12th. And just to clarify, at the last board, we talked about the posting. The original winter posting, I didn't realize Kim sent it out, it was back in January. We resent the posting out because we had some changes in positions since January, but the original posting, she's not for winter sports, for fall sport, was done back in January. So we sent a revised one out so that staff could see the new positions that are available.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Wamsley, bond update?
Last week, we had a couple of hiccups in our bond program. Not bad, but just some, while they were doing some digging out in the back here, the gas line was a little farther over than where it was marked. And so the backhoe that was back in had crimped it. And so we had to evacuate the building for safety precautions. But it's all fixed and back buried. You can see we've pushed a lot of work ahead since we knew we were going to be off when the board made the decision. So we worked with AUC and moving projects ahead as much as we can. The robotics area, it looks unbelievable. It's, I took Nick Mathis, one of the coaches through there last week, and he was beyond elated with what the robotics will be able to do now in that area. So all the other projects, the middle school office, the walls are up. They were finishing the electrical and the drywall at the top of the walls. They'll be, you'll be seeing soon, the cut, the new entrance way will be cut into the building. And they took out the cement to begin pouring the pillars for the new entrance canopy for the middle school. Same entrance canopy is being done for the robotics, as well as the new culinary arts entrance. The elementary additions are, I mean, they're nearing completion. The windows should be going in the middle of the month, so you'll start seeing the boards come off the windows and the windows of rooms are painted, the cabinets are up. It's, things are moving ahead. So not much different from when Jerry spoke at the last meeting from AUC. Or AUC, I always, but we're moving ahead. We are meeting on the budget, Tammy and I, we got a first draft of it, where our status report. We are, right now, everything's going good. We're under budget in a lot of areas and definitely on time and ahead in many areas. So I'm feeling better about going into the summer with the amount of construction that we have planned. We have some of the stuff being moved out next week. The non-spring sports storage rooms are all being moved out. The library books that they are not being used here at the high school are being moved out. And then we got preschool, the first week of June, that will, stuff will be moved out to clear that whole wing of the building. And then the June 11th is really the busy day, which is that weekend will empty all three, all three buildings. So we're, we're doing well. Very pleased.
You gotta put, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Deb? Thank you. Can I ask a question? Sure. About the bond?
Yeah.
Brian, I know we're doing so well with things are coming in under budget and that. Is, is there a process started yet? Will there be a process? If there's money extra for other things to be able to do with that money?
Yeah, what we've done in the past bond and what we're planning to do for this one is, we have a list of things like, for instance, the elementary wall between the gymnasium and the cafeteria. At some point, we need to really look at that. That's not going to last much longer. So is that something that we could use as being one of the, for me, that I would list that as a priority to eventually replace that? Looking at furniture, because there's not a huge furniture budget, but looking at furniture as you're seeing some of the tables are starting to wiggle and not be as sturdy as they used to. And they're getting beyond repairs because it's either a press board or some other material that the legs are being screwed into and they don't last as long. So yes, we are putting together a list. There's things that, as we've done the bond project, people say, well, could we add this? Or could we add, I'm adding that to the list of, I'm going to call it the second phase that the board would consider. I mean, it wasn't part of the original scope. It does fall within the language of the bond that we could do, but it's really if the dollars are there. Because remember, we've, we added some things to the bond that wasn't part of the original when we did the application. It falls in the parameters. Like, for instance, we were able to put air conditioning in all the buildings.
Right.
That's a large ticket item.
Right.
We were able to put the sidewalk that will go in the summer that runs along with the easiness for the city on the property, so that people will be able to walk to school because that, that new subdivision is a walking zone. So we were able to add some of that stuff. But it's still, there's still all these wish lists out there. Furniture, some furniture wish lists that we need to repair and replace over time. It's still good now, but it's not going to last another two, three years. But yeah, so the, in a short answer to your question, yes, there's a running list of things that we'd like to do, but weren't part of the original scope of the bond.
Do you, have there been any talks of like when that would come to the board? Like, summer, fall, what's the?
I would envision it would come at the next, either December, January timeframe, because this Tuesday, we have the meeting regarding the designs for the athletic complex. That change that's going to come, that will eventually come to you. And then we've got one more paving bid that we have to put out, which is the roadway and the student parking lot half that's being done this summer. So we got next summer that will address that. And next fall, a year from this fall, will be when we do the baseball and softball diamonds. So once we know what those dollars are, we can then move it. Because that was another project that the original design wasn't in what we had planned for the scope. But thinking if for future growth, rather than invest in something, moving the softball diamond in the future, you're gonna, that's it. So, so there's been some ticket items that were larger than we expected because we've added more scope in the long-term perspective, which will help the district. So.
Okay.
So I would guess in January, that's when we started having that conversation where we're, where we're starting to look.
Okay. Thanks.
Deb? Unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I thought I did. Anybody else have any more questions regarding the bond? Okay. Next item on our agenda is the presentation of the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. Mr. Wamsley?
Well, I will start, make sure I'm unmuted here. In your packet, you have the document for April. I just want to review the two-way communication that we did for April, which actually begins on page 18. This is not the right one. Give me a second here. Two-way communication. The PDF is open, so just give me a minute and I'll put it on the screen. There we go. There we go. Sorry for this, I thought it was up there. Didn't. There we go. All right. I will share the screen to show everybody so we're on the same page here. Okay. This is the April two-way communication log, which is, shows from, really from week 27, which is March 15 through the 19th. You can see as a district, we averaged 95.55%. Again, the two-way communication logs, we have to have two document interactions with a student within a week's period. The week of the 28th, our district average was 99.52. The week before spring break was 97.82. You have spring break in there, the first week of April. And then the week we got back, which is the, because a couple of those days were virtual days and somewhere in-person days, we were nearing 99.3%. So our two-way communication has been, throughout the entire year, has been very strong, based on the definition. Our current model right now is we are virtual till April 30th. That was the direction as we came back from spring break. We had a significant uptick in that, that number. Currently, in looking at the numbers, by April, by the end of the week, everybody should be, that we know of, should be off quarantine and nobody in a quarantine situation that we know of. Can't say that won't be the case when we come back. Numbers as a county are starting to come, they're starting to come down. They're still relatively high, but they are starting to come down. I don't have any reason to believe, to tell you tonight, to recommend to stay virtual. The only thing that, that I will say that I am most concerned with, I'm concerned with all of it, but a group that, that may have a significant impact is our seniors. Just because if they're put into a quarantine situation, we're now affecting graduation. And, you know, that's a big moment for a senior. It's one thing that, you know, Mr. Castle and I have gone kind of back and forth in conversation. There's, I don't see a right answer to this. Because it is a roll of the dice, we don't know how things are going to be when, you know, we come back. So my recommendation to you would be to return to in-person instruction, beginning May 3rd, with an option for families, if they want to stay virtual, they could. I think the ability for families to choose what's in their best interest has been strong for our district. Each family is very different, has different situations. So I think that's a strong positive for our district. I think our staff are, they want to finish strong as a year, as collective as a staff. You know, getting back into the safety protocols and making sure we're following that so that we can finish strong. I have every confidence that our staff will do it because they, they really want to be with kids as a collective group. Virtual is, is not for everybody and I commend the staff for what they've done to date because it's, they're trying and giving it their all. So, so with that, we talked about the instructional delivery. I gave you my recommendation as, as to the board. I shared its two-way communication. So we would just be looking for public comment for this particular section. So Bridgette, like we've done in the past, I'll incorporate the public comment into the official document. And so I just need your signature on that in the past. So I'll turn it over to you unless the board has questions for me.
I do. Go. I do, Brian. When you're talking about, when we come back in person on the 3rd and families can choose to do virtual. Now, before we went virtual, they were able to, if they wanted to be virtual for a two-week period, is it, are we doing it like that? Or do they have to be virtual for, you know, how, how we had been doing it, however many weeks or whatever it was? What, what are we doing?
We are, let's see, the semester started, we are two weeks into the last quarter.
Okay.
So we're getting to a point where if someone wanted to stay virtual, that if they wanted to stay two weeks, we're at that five-week window where they could switch, or we're nearing it, I should say. I will say this, our staff have been extremely flexible with parents in trying to address their individual needs. If someone is adamant that they're, they want to come back or vice versa, they want to go virtual, we're going to work with them. I mean, we don't want to, we don't, this is a unique year. And, and again, I've said it in previous meetings, but, you know, it's not easy on the teaching staff. It's not easy on the secretaries trying to coordinate the move from one to the other, the pupil accounting. But they've done a remarkable job this year. So I'll just leave, we will work with the families. If there's a situation, you know, that we're going to try to get as much consistency for the teacher as possible so that they can focus on how they're going to teach because it, but we'll work with the families.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else have any other questions just regarding the first two sections? Okay. At this time, we have public comments. Any member of the public may address the board at this time regarding the Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. Please state your name and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments? If you could wave or?
Doesn't look like a, oh. I don't. I went through each screen. I haven't seen.
Teresa Ranger's waving there. I'm assuming.
Mrs. Ranger?
Yes. I, I don't know if this is the, if I'm supposed to, I wanted to make a public comment, but I don't know if it's supposed to be at this part of the meeting or later.
If you wish to. It's this. Other public comments?
Because it was a comment about when we went to, when we went to virtual, so.
It's related to the plan. I would say that, so.
Okay, thank you. And I'll be quick. I just, my name's Teresa Ranger, I'm the president of the teachers' union. And on behalf of the REA, I want to thank the Board of Education and also Superintendent Wamsley for allowing us some time, some transition time to get us up and running from in-person to virtual so smoothly and quickly. So I appreciate the time we got and thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mrs. Ranger. Is there any other public comments? Okay. Other public comments? Brian, do we need to do number four? It says reaffirm or amend the instructional delivery?
No, we have an action item.
I know we do.
So this, this would be the fourth one would be if there's, if a board member felt strongly one way or the other. And if the board was, I don't want to say divided, but had differences of opinion, this would be a time to kind of work it out, what your plan on doing for that action item.
Thank you. Is everyone okay with us going back? That would be May 3rd?
May 3rd.
To, to live? Yes. Or in-person? Yes. Okay. We're good. Okay, we are going to move on to our agenda item. Next is the MISD fiscal 2022 budget presentation by Mrs. Pacito. She attended for us down at the ISD.
You're muted. Well, maybe not.
There we go. Thank you, President Michon. It was a great meeting. It always is at the MISD. They're extremely thorough and informative when it comes to their presentations. But I'm going to be brief. You did get, hopefully, we've been able to read the MISD operating budget, at least look through it in some way. It's pretty extensive. So I did go through it and along with the presentation, I was able to kind of condense some of it and, what's the word I'm looking for? Be able to just kind of overview it without having to go through all this. But the Michigan School Code requires an ISD to prepare an annual general fund budget to be supported by the School Board of Education. The MISD operating budget document represents the programs that serve the district and students in the 21 local school districts that are part of the MISD. Some of the services provided are accounting and financial services, curriculum and assessments, media support, teachers workshops, human resources, legal affairs, management training, and services for special needs children, along with specific schools that help provide occupational therapy and visual and early, or schools for cognitively impaired and emotionally impaired and autistic impaired children. Currently, the project revenue is at $98,648,880. The projected expenditures is $98,000, $98,088,080, leaving a fund equity of $3,804,846. This makes the MISD budget balanced and with some extra revenue. The budget reflects a slight increase in the property tax revenue of a .014%. It also reflects the Milich enhancement, which will generate over $58 million in the 2122 budget. 98% of the funds from the Milich enhancement will go to local school districts based on enrollment. The budget also assumes little to no change in state funding from the 2021 revised budget released by the MISD. Budget will be finalized once final numbers for property taxes and state budget is completed. Budget based on release by government, the governor, showing no per pupil increase this year. There are currently bills in both the Senate and the House that do contain a per pupil increase, but it looks like it'll be less than $200. The final state budget and tax, House, House property taxes should be released in July. The possible areas of interest from the presentation that I would like to, that I'd like to bring back to the board was a mental health grant that is available. I'm not sure if we're currently partaking in that. And then also, I know we have addressed in the past the, I don't know if you want the numbers, but the GASB 84, the fiduciary activities account. I don't know if we're, I know a couple of years ago, that was addressed when I went to the MISD. So I was curious where we are with that currently. And then also, a wonderful program that I thought we may be interested as a district is the Teacher Cadet Program for grades 11 and 12 to have a training to be able to work within our district in K through 6 classrooms. And that's what I have here. And I also have a printout of my little notes, if anybody would like some, or like a copy or, and if anybody has any questions.
When do we vote on this budget?
Next meeting, I believe. I was informed, we will be making a resolution to vote.
And the next board pack, you get the resolution, the backup to either support or not support the ISD's budget. So is your recommendation, I'm assuming, to support based on what you said?
Yes, my recommendation is to support the MISD budget.
Okay, cool. Anybody have any other questions for Mrs. Pacito regarding the MISD financial account? Okay. We will move on to our fiscal 2022 budget projections and assumptions. Mr. Wamsley?
Okay. Before I begin, it's funny, the ISD has to have all 21 school districts approve their budgets. So that's why they are often several times months ahead of ours. And they're making assumptions even on information that may now be released now. So it's, there's a delay in the budget process. So, okay, today, we're going to talk about the FY22 budget. Let me just make sure I got everything here. Okay. In front of each of the board members, I gave you an updated budget because as Tammy and I were reviewing it this afternoon one last time, we wanted to get some clarifying points in there. I'm going to start with the beginning, which would talk about the local revenue assumptions, the state revenue assumptions. This is our baseline. Our plan is, once we get through tonight, we are now going to take the numbers, both the revenue and the expense, and now actually put them into the AS400 so we can see what is in the bottom line that we are either have revenue exceeding expenses or expenses exceeding revenue. And that's where we need to finalize a decision. Everything that we presented to you and the assumption we're making tonight has no reductions in any staffing. It has some increase in staffing based on what we've previously talked about on enrollment and so forth. So as Angela said, the property taxes values, we expect to be released in May. So that will affect how much our enhancement dollar value is for our district. The one thing we need to remember is you're taking the number of kids in Richmond as your numerator and your denominator is the total number of kids in the county. The county has lost kids countywide. We, and I'm proud to say it again, we were the only district that went up, public schools that went up. So if there's less numbers in the denominator, that's going to affect the overall portion of the pie for the enhancement mills, which we'll, we'll know as we, in the, in the next month. We reduced summer school tuition to zero as we talked about gate receipts and pay to participate in the FY22 budget to zero with the anticipation that we probably won't be collecting gate receipts or having plays. Assuming normal pre-pandemic amounts such as the pay to participate fees, hopefully, our kids will be back going on field trips, childcare, tuition, et cetera. The Roosevelt Civic Auditorium is tabled to that June 14th conversation. We assumed enrollment was flat, so our blended rate is 146514. At the time, when we talked about this last time, the only budget that was released was the governor's at $164 increase for Richmond, it's a two X formula, which basically means those at the lower end will get two times the foundation increase. So it would be approximately if the governor's budget was passed, $240,000. The 11D per pupil increase that we were beneficiaries of this year is, was a one-time revenue and it was assumed to be one-time, so we zeroed that out. Other categoricals such as GSRP remain at this year's amounts. The competitive safety grant, the revenue, we will be eliminating. That was done, it was the high school doors, that revenue will be gone in the budget. So now let's talk about what we know in state assumptions based on the foundation. So I'm going to turn it over to Tammy at this point.
As Brian mentioned, the governor's budget was out. We talked about that.
We talked about that, $164 per student. The Senate proposal came out last week in the House, maybe been two weeks ago. The Senate's budget proposal is similar to the governor's. Um, and it includes a $250 increase in foundation for Richmond. Um, we would go from eight thousand one eleven to eight thousand three sixty-one per student, which is about $366,000 in new revenue for the district. The House proposal came out, it's, it has some variables in it that, not similar to the governor's. There's still an increase of $100 in foundation, uh, which would give us about 146,000. Um, and then there's a one-time, it's revenue's add-on the foundation of $120 per student, and that would add another 175,000 for the district.
So the important thing to remember, and I apologize, I didn't even realize I did not have my mask on, so I apologize to the group. Um, when we look at the House budget, if, if we're going to assume the House allocation, my recommendation would start at the foundation because that other money of the hundred-dollar increase, because that other dollar is, right now, what we consider one-time money. There's no guarantee it will be there next year. So if it's something that we do get, obviously, then we can come back and re-tweak our budget and, and address it. But when we're looking at expenses going forward, if it's going to be a permanent expense, we're trying to build it into the foundation, so it is states there, we, we know we have the money, unless the legislators just cut us per pupil. Um, so the question I'm going to pose to the board is what do you feel most comfortable with now that we have all three budgets? You know, with the previous board meeting, we talked the one sixty-four, which was the governor. Um, we have the Senate, which is 250, and then we have the House, which is 100. You can go to the conservative approach, and we build it on a hundred dollars per pupil because it looks like that's at least the minimum. I would be surprised if it came in $50, but none of their budgets even have are in the $50, but, um, so I guess that's where I'm looking for some guidance here. Where do you guys feel most comfortable with? From a conservative nature, I would recommend you build the budget on a hundred dollars per pupil increase, since that seems to be the, the common denominator in all of them, if you will.
Brian, what's, in the past, what typically have we gotten?
We've gotten anywhere from $50 to nothing to $240. It depends on, um, the year. The thing to keep in mind, you know, is not this site budget cycle, but also next budget cycle, you're also dealing with an election. Usually, schools do well in election seers because they're trying to get the votes, if you will. So it varies. In some years, we've seen where it's flat, some, some has said, we'll give you flat, we'll give you care categoricals, which is just, here's kind of one-time money, we'll increase 31A, but then they have strings attached. You don't have as much flexibility to use like 31A as you would just general fund per pupil dollar. Um, like I said, if they're, if all three are coming out with something, like I said, I, I would recommend minimally you choose the hundred dollars and we build the budget on that because that's, um, now, with that said, they could easily come back and not agree, and we have nothing come July 1. And we are at their, the hands of the legislature and governor, so.
Okay, it was, I would be good if we started at the hundred thousand, the hundred. I would feel comfortable. How we doing? Sherry, what do you think?
Yeah, yes.
Kyle? Okay. Okay, so Mr. Walmsley, I'm hearing that we would start with at least that, and hopefully we'll get more.
I'll just, uh, your thing wasn't unmuted, just as a FYI, but, all right. Okay, so then we go on, uh, we are building the budget that all the carryovers from nineteen has been zeroed out, we spent it. So those, that revenue will be gone when you see the next budget or the budget. Um, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand that we received this year, which was from the coronavirus relief funds, um, Esser one dollars, we got some money from the MISD that helped pay for the, um, uh, interactive cameras in the classroom. We got some device rebates, um, we credited some families with childcare on their bill, and, and we got some cost savings, um, and COVID-19, all of that's going to be zeroed out, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, all right? We are expecting Esser two, we know we have forty percent of it, and the latest budgets are trying to allocate the rest, so we will build the, uh, Esser two allocation, the revenue is 725,000 approximately. Um, and, and we're going to see it later on. Um, I would recommend our Esser three allocation because we could spend it over three years that we can, we've only planned for a third of it. And there's some ideas on how the expenses, when we get to the expense page. And then, uh, the last variable on the revenue side is the change in the MISD enhancement millage. We expect it to go up. We just don't know the final dollar and how they're doing the, the, the mathematical formula for the number of kids versus the overall, so that we should have in May. Um, I actually talked to Mr. Bodia the other day, and, uh, he was actually working on what numbers he was getting to finalize that for all the districts. So that's our revenue, so that, on the, when you get your budget next month, all that revenue now will be reflected what we just talked about with the assumption. Now let's talk about staffing. Um, so I'm going to turn it back over to Tammy for, these are now the expenses and what we know is going to change in the budget.
Okay, as Brian mentioned, we plan to maintain current levels of staffing, um, and with the addition of two teaching positions that we talked about at the last meeting, one is an additional high school teaching position. Right now, we have teachers working their prep period. This would hopefully eliminate the need to have them working their prep period with an additional staff number. Um, and the other position would be a fourth grade position at the middle school. Um, this would accommodate the same number of third grade sections we have right now at Lee Elementary, so we've maintained the smaller class size. We factored in salary increases, um, last year, some, during the year, we had non-union staff, teachers, secretaries receive pay increases during the year, so that pay increase was only in place for part of the year. So for the 2122 budget, we'll have that entirely, the entire increase in.
I just want to clarify, when we settled the teacher contract, it was around October, so normally their pay would have started in Jul, in August 31st or whenever we started school. So there was a month that that new rate didn't take into effect. We had some secretaries in their current contract got a, uh, I believe a half step in January. So they, we only really paid that, that full rate half a year, so now we will have it for the whole year, plus whatever else we have. Um, and then I believe in, I want to say it was October-ish, when the board approved the amended budget, with any of the, the non-union childcare, preschool, bus drivers had a three percent increase at that point. So, Tammy?
We've also factored in any contractual increases that we, um, that are in the contract, so anyone who might be getting longevity, um, we have secretaries, paraprofessionals, we've assumed anything in their contracts because their contracts are in place, that we would implement that. Then the, we didn't do any, um, any changes for contracts that are going to be expiring, and so the teacher's contract is expiring, administrator's contract is expiring, so we did not build anything in for increases in those contracts. Um, food service is also expiring, but they're in a separate fund, they're in the food service fund, so that would be budgeted in that fund.
So when you look at the budget, uh, when we actually put it, there will be an increase in some of these non-unions whose contract is expired because of certain costs we know are going up. And Tammy's going to get into a couple more of those in the next bullet.
The one item that is big for us is the hard cap for insurance, where hard cap district, um, Michigan Department of Treasury sets those rates, and there's a 3.7% increase for this year. So when we were calculating personnel costs, we included the increase in the hard cap for the 2122 budget. We also, um, another major expense for us is retirement, and, I'm sorry, let's go back to insurance. Other insurances we don't have yet, um, dental, vision, LTD, um, life, we don't have those new rates, so we'll wait to get those and then factor those into the budget, but I doubt we will have them for the next, uh, meeting. That'll probably be later in May.
The other thing we assumed on insurance is someone currently has full family, we insurance, we assume they're staying full family. If someone is single, they're staying. So there may be situations where, um, their personal lives change, and that's going to fall out when we do open enrollment in the fall. So that will come in your amendment, but we assumed everybody who has it is maintaining it for next year with the new rates that we have.
The retirement rate, um, in the governor's budget proposal gave retirement rates for next year. There's seven or eight different plans. Um, those increases in those plans vary from no increase to a point two five percent increase, depending on the plan each employee chooses. Um, for budgeting purposes, we use the plan that has the highest rate, but it's also the plan that has the most employees in it, and that plan had an increase of point zero seven percent. When you look at the retirement rates, um, overall, we went from a 42.72% rate for this year to 43.28%. I know you can't, you can't, you're not going to be able to add point oh seven to get to that number, but it's a, it's a difference in those two numbers divided by the old, so it's the actual percentage increase in cost that we factor into the budget. We also have UAAL, the stabilization contributions, that rate increased 3.72%, and that increase will be reflected when you see the budget next month. Um, that went from 14.51% to 15.05%.
So you're probably, as we, as we get to, um, look at all of these staffing, um, we're over 100,000 in just known staffing increases. Now, we will flush that out when you get the, you're actually going to get the line item budget next, at the next meeting, so you're actually going to see the, you know, the teacher, here's what it was, here's what it will be budgeted. Just by the healthcare increases, the retirement increase, known movements in the, the pay, increases in current contract length because they're getting a pay, or there may be people who get longevity now that didn't get, or their longevity payment as a teacher increases next year over what it's currently. When you add all of those up, we're over 100,000 increased personnel costs, and we've assumed no new, um, no reductions in any staff, um, from that angle. So, um, any questions at this point? Because I'm, we're still talking about, here's the assumptions we're making, and our goal is to make sure that you're comfortable with those assumptions, so now we can put it into the budget, put the number to it, so you're seeing what's your bottom line. And then that's where we have the conversation, okay, what, do we need to reduce something? Do we need to, maybe we have money that will, if we assume these revenue and assume these student number, that you'll have extra revenue to be able to do something with? And I have another page here, but is there any questions at this point?
I don't know if this is the right time for the question, but going back to the first page, when, um, you're talking about the pay to participate. I know we had the conversation, um, what we did for this year, and we talked about, talking about pay to participate through the budget process. So is that, you know, are, what are we going to do with it? Are we going to talk about eliminating it, do, doing whatever? So is, is now the time, or is it, when does that conversation?
We could do it one in two, I see in two different areas. If, if the collectively of the board says your goal is to eliminate pay to participate, we can build the budget knowing these increased costs and eliminate that revenue item. Or we can see where we know the pay, the personnel costs, and we got to account for that, and now you come back and say, okay, do we have the ability to eliminate it? And that would be at the May 10th board meeting. So you can either direct us as a collective, we really want to eliminate it, and we take it out, or we can leave it in there as is, and then we have the May 10th conversation because you, the bottom line, you'll have a better understanding how close we are. I mean, you could, you can kind of look it off the top of your head, just, and there's a lot of other variables. We've got supplies and custodial contracts we got to consider and so forth, but if we assumed the hundred dollars, your 146,000 increase based on the enrollment that we projected or that we are budgeting for. If we're about $100,000 in new expenses just on personnel, you know, you, you got forty-six kind of leeway, but again, that does not assume any money set aside at this point to settle contracts or, um, or to address pay to participate. So you, you really have two options. If, if, if you really want to eliminate, we can build it with zero, no revenue for pay to participate. If you want to wait and see how your bottom line, as we start putting these numbers into the actual budget, we could do it at the May 10th, and that would be the conversation you could have then, because that would be just a zeroing out of a, and I want to speak to, just zeroing out that line item for the revenue.
I, however it works, I mean, I, I would like to have the conversation, and I thought we talked about too, the, um, the enhancement dollars too. I mean, that's, that money can be used for a whole lot of things, salaries, all that kind of stuff, so. And the people voted for that, you know, that, that kind of thing. I, I just would like to have a conversation. We've, we've bannered it about the last few, couple of years, you know, and it, it doesn't seem to fall and work out, but I would like to have the conversation.
Okay, I could put that on the May 10th.
Does that work?
I'm hoping on the May 10th, I will have numbers from the county on the enhancements.
Okay.
I mean, I, I fully anticipate we're going to get more. I mean, property values are up and so forth, and even Paul and his budget, I can't remember the exact number, he's budgeting a little more in the enhancement bill. Um, so we're going to have that plus, you know, our bottom line. So I, I could add that to the conversation to talk about on May 10th, if the, what's with the board wanting.
I would be good with that because I'd like to kind of see the total picture.
Me too.
I think it'd be easier to at least make a decision.
Yep.
Everybody good with that? Okay.
So when you look at the last page, um, we're talking about the federal and state grant expenditures. You know, we talked about the revenue for the safety grant, that expense is going to go away, so we're reducing the expenses by 158,000 because that project is done. Again, all the carryover expenses are going away because we don't have those, we spent those dollars. The Esser revenue of the 881,000 that we talked about on page one, the expenses are all going away, so it's, they're zeroing out. Um, we're going to build in an estimated $725,000 in expenses in Esser two. And so what we've primarily been, uh, in the board's recent action on Esser two, um, has been primarily laptops, desktops, the classroom technology at Lee, um, network infrastructure, the switches and so forth that we've been building. Um, and then any of the remaining Esser two, the recommendation would be, we had some building COVID substitute teachers that, under the 881s, that dollar went away, and we started getting some general expense, general fund expenses, which was budgeted in the February second amendment. We don't have to use those in the general fund, we can use them towards Esser two. So it helps our general fund by charging to the appropriate grant, um, which would, those big ticket items, I mean, you're talking, we've purchased hundreds and hundreds of laptops and desktops and the, the computer systems, um, are going to pretty much use up the Esser two. There may be some, a little, little dollars when we're net. The Esser three, um, we would, we would plan on putting, um, a third of the expenses in. Again, the total budget is a 1.74 million that we're expecting from Esser three. Uh, some of the things that we would use as expenses to charge towards that for next school year would be, um, our recommendation would be to keep the counselor in there. If you recall, in the last budget, we put the counselor out of COVID release dollars, you know, keep it in there for pretty much for the next three years, and at some point, you've got to figure out how to get it back in general fund, or we do, I should say. I would recommend that we continue our building subs and building COVID aids for one more year. I'm hoping next year's a better year, but I don't think it's going to go away. And I think if we can have the ability to have staff on hand when we need it, especially if, if substitutes are a struggle, if we know people are willing to commit to the whole year, um, we can lock them in. Uh, and we've got some great building COVID aids that are helping, trying to keep the building, wiping down the handles and the doors and checking kids as they're coming in. I would also build an expense in there as, um, the cost of continuing a virtual learning. Um, there was a cost to do it this year, a compensation cost. Um, we need to build in some dollars to continue that. My recommendation to the board is we, we come up with, um, and it's going to be in our, our plan that we have to roll out for next year, but I, I really believe we need to continue an option for families for virtual learning. We have families that, again, I, I don't have, I don't have a crystal ball, I don't have a magic eight ball or anything, but I think are going to be hesitant to come back in the fall at this point until maybe it's another year, and I want to, we want to keep those families. And then we, when we looked at cleaning supplies we spent over this year, 360 cleaning supplies, hand sanitizers, wipes, all that, uh, we're nearing about $75,000 in PPE. Uh, those could also come out of the grant. So if you add the counselor, the building subs, the COVID aids, a, a cost for continuing virtual learning, the PPE, we still have about 75 to 100,000 to allocate out of the one year's budget of Esser three. And so that would be conversation, how, how, how could we use that? And so that would be conversations of how, how, how could we use that? And then again, if you, if we, by splitting that budget over three years, if you want to continue the people, you really have three years to keep those people on board, if that's what you choose to do. And then finally, the expenses, when we looked at the budget, there are, there's approximately seventy eight thousand dollars that are listed under capital outlay expenses. Um, and it was timing. Uh, we got um, a, a bleacher revenue and a bleacher, we paid for bleachers, but the timing of the bleachers came when they came in expense and the revenue was shown in one year and the expense came in another year. So that, we, we don't have a bleacher purchase. Um, we had used in the first budget amendment, we bought some laptops. Um, I believe it was fifty thousand dollars for, I think it was the ninth grade laptops at that time. Um, or we don't need that capital outlay in general fund. We had some um, desks and chairs when we were looking at classroom um, uh, increases in the size of it that we had budgeted in the big picture budget. We don't need that. So total is about seventy. So you're going to have seventy eight thousand of general fund reductions in, you know, I'm going to call it supply or capital outlay account. We haven't, at this point, I'm not recommending touching any supply accounts. I'm not recommending touching any um, schedule B positions, um, keeping everything as is. That's our plan is to build the budget to see our bottom line. It's, it's very promising because you can see if we, based on the revenue, based on the student count, based on the grants we had and being able to charge certain things to it. Um, I'm very optimistic that we're going to be in a much better position than we have been. Many years. I'm saying we're good, we're not saying we're going to be having a ton of money, living and spending all it, but I think it's not, the, the decisions are going to be made. When I look at the bottom line and starting to put some of these numbers in there, we are in um, a little better situation than we've been in past. But again, we got to remember a lot of these dollars are one-time money that our venture are going to go away. So that's why we're, I'm cautious when I recommend something that we aren't putting too much into a structural cost that's going to affect, um, we're not going to be able to pay for it when that money goes away. So I guess the question is, is there anything in any of these assumptions that makes a board member uncomfortable? Or does it seem reasonable that we now build the actual budget on all of these assumptions? And now get to a, the next meeting is what's the bottom line?
I'm good with these assumptions.
I am too.
Okay. So at the next meeting, if there's nobody, at the next meeting, you will get the actual line item revenue and expenses and we'll see the final bottom line once we've added all the grants and taken all the assuming a hundred dollar increase per pupil.
Thank you, Mr. Walmsley.
Hey, Jamie. Sorry.
Not a problem. Our next item on the budget is our superintendent evaluation goals. Um, after some discussion with Mr. Walmsley and, and members of the board, we're going to do this this evening. Um, I'm going to allow each board member to state if they felt like uh, they have a goal or something they would like uh, Mr. Walmsley to consider. Um, he is going to take that information and he is going to come back with three goals for the remainder of this year. As I stated in the email to you, remember we only have about six months here and then we're going to be back into the evaluation cycle. You do not need to provide a goal if you don't want to. That's uh, your choice or opinion. We're just giving him some ideas at this point. Is there any member who would like to start? Or anyone who would like to? I mean, I can if you want. Okay. Um, one of the, I took, when I looked at a possible goals and Mr. Walmsley and I have talked about these, I looked at the evaluation that was done in December and I know I wasn't part of that. Um, but I looked at some of the comments in there. So one of, one of the suggestions that I had is, um, we do have three new board members. Um, I know there was a comment in there about continuing to build trust and collaboration and respectful relationship with board members. So I, um, that would be a suggestion that I would make or that Mr. Walmsley could consider. Um, another thing that was in his evaluation, again, and this is based on the comments that were, were done with, with the board members at that time, was to review the administration evaluation. Um, to ascertain if it's most, it is the most effective tool for their growth and to provide quality feedback to allow administrators to grow as an instructional leader. So I would suggest looking at, um, and I know that it, it is partly in progress, looking at their evaluation tool and determining if that's the best tool and possibly then going into the fall, changing, getting them some training, you get training to, to administer that. Um, so those are two ideas that I had that I wished to share this evening. Bridget, is there anything? I'll just kind of work my way around.
Thank you. Um, mine would be um, forming better relationships with staff. And I agree with the um, board member one as well. Um, better lines of communication. And that's all I had.
Whoops. Thank you. Um, Ms. Zubi?
Um, I also feel communication, um, uh, communicating a little more effectively, um, providing timely communication, uh, just not, not too, but um, uh, and staff, I guess. Um, and also about, um, like what Deb had said about um, the administrator evaluation tool and just um, being able to.
Sherry, Sherry. I can't hear you in here. I don't know if it's breaking up for everybody else.
Oh, can you hear me better now?
Oh, am I not?
The microphone? Uh, just being able to, um, I'm trying to think of the word. Uh, help staff move forward with their, you know, goals and, and um, helping them do their work effectively. Uh, I, I don't know if I'm reading it correctly. Um, but that, that's a couple of the things I had.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Teltow?
My question is, how are we going to measure these goals? That would be something for the board to discuss these ideas of goals that we have. And I, I believe that Brian should come up with his own goals as well on what his plans are for the district debut. And I have had conversations. Um, so I just, I just caution that we know when we're setting out goals, how, how they're going to be measured. Um, because that's how everybody's successful. Um, so I, the, I have said uh, many times, the only thing I'm concerned with right now is we've got to get the bond completed in, on time and uh, continue to work through this pandemic because I think we're going to start the next school year where we leave off.
I thought, Margaret, what we would do is, um, once Mr. Walmsley gave us the three goals at the next board meeting, we could then have a discussion, okay? How are we going to assess that so that he knows what we were, be looking for? Um, Mr. Simmons?
Uh, I don't have anything that uh, hasn't already been discussed.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Sutton?
All right, um, I kind of echo, um, I was put in that position of being part of that evaluation, but it was nice to just be able to sit back and kind of listen um, at the end of the year last year. And I kind of agree with you, Deb and Sherry about um, trying to find something an administrative evaluation tool that's a little bit more successful in helping grow the administrators as opposed to um, the current system that's out there. Um, and then also the other one, when I was looking at the different components, like was said before too, was communication and community relations. I feel like we hold the teachers, you know, in teaching, we're always told we need to have timely feedback for our students. So if we give a test, we're not sending it back to them. A week later, we're giving it, you know, to them the next day or the following day after that. So I feel like we need to hold ourselves and the superintendent as well, everybody in the district to, you know, that same timely, timeliness is a big thing. Um, and just having timely feedback, whether it's, you know, twenty four hours of, you know, acknowledging that you've got a message or heard of something or forty eight hours, you know, for a response and that type of thing. So I feel like communication would be a good one as well.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Pacito?
Thank you. I agree with um, many of the other board members and how they have mentioned about communication and maybe staff relations. Um, I think it's definitely crucial because when we do look at each one of the domains that we have here, much of it is about communication with staff and relations. And I know that, um, I do feel that over the last, uh, this will be my third evaluation or third year kind of looking in on this, that I have seen an improvement. I do see that you do have a desire to, you know, want to improve those, you know, communications. So I have seen that you are working towards them. So I just would like to, I guess, to see the continued progress of hopefully improving staff relations. And um, if we're going to speak about measurables, I guess I'll bring that up at the next time if that ends up being something that we need to talk to. But I did notice, I don't know if you maybe, Mr. Superintendent Walmsley, want to make a note, but the domain five and four and six all deal with communication and, you know, so that I think is in, in relationships and uh, that kind of thing. So I don't know if um, professional development or workshop or something like that. I don't know if maybe that would be interested. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
With the exception of you, who here at the board table knows what the administrator's evaluation tool looks like? Because if I remember the conversation, and I believe Sherry, you're the one that brought up, um, without going in because Brian's evaluation is done in closed session, but there was conversation about it. So if we're going to make comments about the um, administrative evaluation tool, we, we've all seen it and know know what the tool is?
I believe it's on um, their website, our website.
But do, so, so we know what it is. We know that it's not effective. That's what we're saying.
I have briefly looked over it and you can ask the board members that said that, I suppose.
Obviously, I, I know I shouldn't be addressing it, but I've had, I'm a part of that tool. Um, it is extremely, and Mr. Walmsley and I've talked, it is extremely possible to be highly effective. Twelve categories on this, in the tool. Um, or what we've talked about is we need to bring it down or get it closer to what, what Mr. Walmsley's doing where it's a little more, maybe a little more basic a little bit instead of having all these, it's just, it's in depth. There's tons of categories. There's just no way someone can physically do that in that tool.
I, and, and I don't disagree with that at all. I just, I don't know that, um, I guess it's cool, but I don't know how measurable. Right. You know, I, I think, and I think Brian did make the point that, um, it is difficult to be highly effective. I think that was conversation. So I, I just want to make sure that we all, we all understand what we're talking about here. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So, um, Mr. Walmsley, all that I ask is that for the next board meeting, you um, come up with three um, goals, three out of your choice or, or what you've heard this evening. And um, we will discuss at that meeting how we're going to measure it. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is our public comment section. This is for anything in general for public comments. And any member of the public may address the board at this time. Please state your name and you will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
I see no, no hands.
No hands.
Nobody waving.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we do not have any public comments. We will move on to our superintendent's uh, and legislative update.
Hey, uh, I'm going to start with some district events. Uh, on April twenty second, Macomb County recognized a total of uh, forty six schools across the county for achieving, for achieving uh, green school status. Um, I can probably say all three of our schools achieved that uh, that status. Um, despite the inability to oftentimes meet in person, do many of the activities that they've done, they have been extremely creative in how they've taught students and implemented activities to become more green, to be more environmentally friendly schools. The Richmond High School received green status. Um, the three levels are green, emerald and evergreen. Um, and I want to congratulate Mr. Trend and Mr. Castle and Mrs. Borwick in, in that building because it is a, is a team effort, not only with the staff and the students, but the people also leading it. Uh, the middle school received evergreen status and that would be a Mrs. Clausen, Mrs. McLeod, uh, Mr. Burke Meyer and Mr. Um, uh, Bartels. And then at the high, or excuse me, the elementary school, they received emerald status and that would be Mrs. LaGroy, uh, Mrs. Manguni and Mr. Koshin, um, obviously the sponsor in that one. Um, Richmond Middle School was only one of three schools that actually went up in their status. So um, they received the highest rating of a evergreen status. So uh, congratulations to them. The last boarding, we talked about in numbers for kindergarten, the class of twenty thirty four, twenty thirty five for four-year-olds and twenty thirty six for three-year-olds. Currently we have seventy one students that have completed the pre-registration process for kindergarten. Of that seventy one, twelve families have completed the process from start to finish and are ready to start school in the fall. Another twenty four are in the process, which means they have a parent portal account. They're filling out the forms and it's just for them to complete it. And then we have thirty five that have not yet signed into their parent portal account. Um, so what we are, we will be reaching out to each one of those families um, to try to see what we can do to assist them in the process. Oftentimes, um, especially with the kindergarten group, um, it, it's not on the radar till we get closer to the school year, but at least we know there are seventy one families that are definitely interested in our kindergarten program. Um, that's a solid three sections of, of kindergarten for a district. Class of twenty thirty five, which is four-year-old preschool. Uh, we have fifty five students that are pre-registered. Of that fifty five, fifteen of them have completed the process. Eleven are in the process, again, meaning they have their parent portal account, filling out the forms. Uh, twelve are uh, have not yet signed up for their parent portal. It's, it's, it's a, it's a multiple step process as we go through. And we're waiting on seventeen deposits to put them to the next phase to hold their slot. Um, so very positive on the numbers. I don't see any of these as being concerning or any type of negative at this point. For the class of twenty thirty six, which is our three-year-old preschool, uh, we have forty pre-registers, forty students interested in our three-year-old program. However, only four of them have completed the process from start to finish. Twelve are in the process. Um, another twelve are in the process, but haven't set up their account yet. And then there are twelve that uh, we're waiting on deposits. So they're somewhere in the, in the process, but you know, forty three-year-olds, fifty five, four-year-olds and seventy one uh, kindergarten is, is a good number at this point. I mean, I, I am not worried at all on that one. Spring, May is a sign of graduations and um, just to remind the board, we have three graduation ceremonies. Uh, the first one is the class of twenty twenty one. Uh, we are combining the graduation and convocation ceremony. That's the one that's at Jimmy John's Field. It will be on Wednesday, May twenty six. Um, I did send the board their, an appointment on this, just reminded, it's at six o'clock. Usually graduations are at seven. Um, this is, it starts at six. Uh, Mr. Castle and I and um, one of the two senior class advisors was able to go to Jimmy John's last week to kind of walk through how it's going to operate. Um, many schools are, are using this facility because it is an outside event. Um, just reminder, it's a rain or shine event. Other than inclement weather that the lightning strikes is over, then they, then they'll move you. But if it's a sprinkle, we're running graduation. Um, each family will get four tickets. They are grouping the tickets so that each pod, they're calling them, are socially distanced apart. Um, on their tickets will be when you can enter the facility. They are doing staggered entrances so that they don't have so many people coming in all at once. Doors will begin opening at five. And every ten minutes, there's another group that's allowed to enter um, the facility. And if you've ever been to Jimmy John's Field on the side that runs parallel to uh, M fifty nine, there is a Bell Ford uh, restoration entrance. ever been to Jimmy John's Field on the side that runs parallel to uh, M59, there is a Bell Ford uh, restoration entrance. That's the entrance that all the guests will enter in. Uh, the board and the graduates will enter at the front entrances. So um, we have a detailed paper that's going to come out, um, because you have to do a QR code to scan to make sure that you are not, um, you know, have no symptoms and so forth as we walk in the facility. If you envision the, the audience, the, the guests will be in the stands. The students and graduates will be sitting around home plate facing the, the pitcher's mound. Uh, the chairs will all be obviously social distance. Uh, the students will walk in, will possess from the outfield up to home plate where then they will divide into the two groups and sit down. Um, the stage is near pitcher's mound, um, where the board and, and those that giving speeches will be at. The board and I will be on one side and then the, the administrator, Mr. Castle and the student speaking will be on the other side to, to balance it out. It will be live streamed. Um, we will give them, it will be live streamed on our Facebook account so they can, anybody can watch it.
That's great.
From home. So uh, I know the, the four tickets is um, in order to do this outside, and again, this is knock on wood, we're still allowed all this come May. I mean, anything could happen between now and May, but our plan is to run the graduation. So um, I just want to remind board members, if there's any particular student that you would like to hand a diploma to, if you could just send me the, the name in an email, send you an email to remind you so that we can coordinate the timing of when you come up to do the diplomas um, for that angle. The second graduation, and um, I will be sending an email tomorrow asking board members if anybody would like to join me is through the International Academy of Macomb. If you recall, we have two, we have two slots every year that we can go to the International Academy of Macomb. We have one student that's graduating with an uh, IB degree. Um, that graduation ceremony is on Thursday, May twenty-seventh, the day after uh, at Jimmy John's Field too. Um, so they will be running there. So if there's any board members that are interested in joining me that night, I would be more than happy. Uh, John Mueller is the graduate for the International Academy. So um, like I said, I will send an email out and, and give you the dates and times that works in your schedule. The third graduation is our early college of Macomb graduation. These are students that um, have basically after five years, they have received not only their high school diploma, but also an associate's degree. And we have um, two, three, four of those students that should be graduating the early college of Macomb with an associate's degree after one year after high school, pretty much. So all paid zero by, by the program. So that program is also at Jimmy John's Field and that will be on Friday, May seventh at four o'clock in the afternoon. Because when they finish there afterwards, they typically go to the Macomb um, MCC, Macomb Community College to run, to participate in the associate's degree. All, obviously, everybody has experienced in some fashion or been to the, our traditional high school graduation. But if you haven't been to the International Academy of Macomb or the early college, it is really something to see. It's a program that really, I mean, we are very fortunate in our county to offer these three avenues for our students to obtain a high school diploma and, and fit their needs. So again, I will send this email out to you. Um, as well as um, in the next week, I'll be coordinating the virtual ceremonies for all the grade level uh, programs that we'll be having that if you can attend, we'd love to have you. As we mentioned in our budget presentation, um, the three bills have been introduced by uh, all the legislature and the governor's office uh, and per pupil. Uh, I would please ask anybody out there listening, I would ask the board members, I mean, I will reach out to. Uh, please call your legislators to ask them to settle the budget as soon as possible so that we can make appropriate plans. Um, it's very hard to uh, build a budget on assumptions that may or may not come true. Um, last year, I think was a testament, I don't think we got our full allocation until August. And we made everything in June just based on assumption that really turned out to be um, at that time, our best guess and what they were telling us in Lansing to prepare for a per pupil cut. And then all of a sudden, they figured out using grant dollars and so forth and didn't do it. So um, call your legislature or legislative representatives and even the governor's office and ask them to, to, you know, put kids first and let's get this resolved. There are some bills that I'm, I'm watching. Um, one particular one that I'm looking at is House Bill forty-four twenty-one. It uh, basically distributes the four point two billion through the school aid fund that we received for the um, basically the S R two, um, the remaining. Um, there's some strings attached to it um, and so forth. If the governor doesn't sign it, this doesn't go into play. So just watch it. Uh, and, and if you're, if you're interested in the process, I'd be more than happy to share any links that you uh, would like to see regarding this. I know the Michigan Association of School Boards often sends out information and has stuff on their website. One of the bills that I think is interesting, and I'm going to be honest with you, I think uh, since I've been in Richmond, we've talked about it often. And even in my previous history, uh, House Bill forty-eighty-two that actually um, oops, sorry. No, no, let me back up, let me back up. Nope, no. In the Senate version of the, of the budget, I apologize, I was, I misread that one. The Senate version of it there includes a four hundred thousand dollar line item for school board members um, to provide reimbursement for course training to be um, to be a, a, a good school board member. Um, as you know, this is not an easy job and it's, it's oftentimes, um, as with any job, you, you don't know what you don't know until you go through it and you realize I didn't know that and you have to, to accommodate and adjust. And it's um, I, I think it's uh, it, it's well overdue. Um, this is probably one of the most um, difficult jobs you have to face as, as a local uh, uh, in the local government area. Um, you're making decisions, dealing with millions of dollars in budgets and trying to figure out the best interest. And so they're recognizing the need to, as we train our teachers and administrators, the school board members also need to be trained so that they can make a very good decision. So I'll be watching that one. Um, uh, the senator from, I believe it's from Traverse City, Wayne uh, Schmidt is the one that uh, added this language. So um, we talked about the Senate, House and the governor's budget. Um, the last thing I, I'll be honest, I, I am going to definitely reach out to the legislature to um, to make sure this goes somewhere. Uh, earlier this, uh, this is earlier last week, House of Representatives overwhelmingly approved a package of bills that was focused on student safety and riding the buses. It's House Bill forty-two oh-one, forty-two oh-two, forty-two oh-three and forty-two oh-four. And what it does, um, it sets penalties for boarding a bus without the permission of a bus driver as a civil infraction punishable up to five hundred dollar fine. It sets specific categories as far as who can board a bus. Um, it sets a civil infraction if you uh, impede the progress or operation of a school board, a school bus. Uh, the one I'm kind of walking, watching is the next one. It allows stop-arm cameras to be installed on school buses to allow for video and photography of people who um, that the law enforcement can use these uh, cameras to prosecute people who do not follow the bus red light stopping. And it also makes a failure to stop um, for a bus a civil infraction punishable by up to five hundred dollar fine. There's no doubt in, in every community, there are people who just don't follow the, the buses. And so this is an attempt to try to protect our kids, both riding the bus and those cars around them. And um, I, I appreciate the diligent effort our families do when they do find someone. They really want to make sure our kids are safe and, you know, we, and the bus drivers are on that bus, they're doing the best they can, just trying to make sure they're safe. And um, some of these drivers that we're dealing with are just, they're not helping us. And so I think it's um, putting this in, like I said, I, I'd be interested on, on this camera to see, you know, what our, our role is as a school district and what we're, you know, are we now working as an agent of the police? There's so many other questions, but the concept, I think, in, in the big picture is we need to have people stop ignoring the law and follow the bus laws, I mean, for the safety of our kids and the bus drivers. So um, that's, that's about it at this point for the district and so forth. I'll just leave it. We're, we're looking forward, um, based on the board's recommendation or voting, um, to come back on May third. I think everybody's ready to come back on, if the board ends up doing that. So that's it.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Um, I just have one comment. I have to give a speech at graduation.
You do.
I was thinking about that today. I'm thinking I left here not thinking I had to make another speech.
You'll do great.
I know. Thank you. It was just, it just crossed my mind when, when you just said that. Okay. We're going to move on to our items of interest from the school board. I'm just going to work my way around the room. I'm going to start with Ms. Sutton. Do you have any items for uh, to address to the, or interest for the board?
Um, I think just one question I had asked Mr. Wamsley during the week last week, and I thought would be beneficial for anybody watching or just, you know, the staff that's out there is regarding um, the, having the SAT as a requirement for graduation and how that's going to affect this year's seniors and possibly next year's seniors. And I thought that his response was good. I don't know if you want to mention it or if you want to.
Sure. We're going to work with everybody that, that anything related to COVID is not going to prevent them. And, and there may be a time that I may have to come to you and ask you to waive a policy or so forth. But the current seniors, the ones that are graduating, class of twenty twenty-one, um, they did not take the SAT as juniors, but they were scheduled to take the SAT in the fall. And all of those have taken it, um, with the exception of just a handful that have a unique situation and so forth. The current juniors, because they waived the, which will be for next year's graduate, class of twenty twenty-two, because they waived the ninety-five percent participation, there is a good chance we're not going to have all of them tested in um, as an SAT, have a valid, have a valid SAT score. I, I'm not at this point to come make a recommendation to you to, to waive that because I don't know what the state's going to do. As they, we didn't expect them to, you know, require it and do everything they did this past fall and kind of create another testing window. In, in the big picture, they did it. So um, it wouldn't surprise me if the state said, okay, anybody not test, you have to test next fall. I hope they wouldn't do that because it, you know, it's, you have a lot of, a lot of kids prepare for these and spend time. But if that is the case that they aren't, um, there would be a recommendation come in that because of what's going on um, that we waive that for that class because of all the, there's so many variables that worked against them to be in try, much like we do with the, a community service hour. We didn't, we didn't hold them accountable for the years that we've been in a COVID for the community service. But um, you know, I, I strongly believe if they completed their educational in Richmond, they've, they are ready to go on to whatever they're doing and whatever they choose to do. Um, and that one test score is not going to make or break them in life. It's, it's sometimes, and I often use this by administrative team and, and many teachers, it's a game we have to play because the states are holding it over our head that we have to do it. Um, and for those kids that really want it, they're going to do well. And there are some kids that see no value in it and it is a struggle to have them put meaning in it because there's no meaning in their personal lives to take it. So with that said, um, right now we're moving forward as, as you have to have it, but it will probably come either at the end of this year or the beginning next year that we're wait, my recommendation would be to waive it because of the situation that we, we've dealt with this year. Um, we want to focus on getting this year's kids graduated, caught up with any credits they missed. That was our focus is the class of twenty-one um, to get them graduated. So, so I hope I, I answered it. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Pocito?
I do have just one comment. I would like to rea- reiterate uh, what Superintendent Wamsley said about contacting our local representatives um, regarding getting the state budget in on time so that we can be sure to have what we need to make our budget effectively. Thank you.
Miss Shuboy? Nothing. No comment. Uh, Mrs. Zuby?
Uh, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Richmond uh, trap shooting team that um, went to a competition over the weekend in Mason, um, where the state tournament is held and they came in first place. So they're, they've got a great start to their season so far. So.
Cool. Uh, Mrs. Teltow?
Um, I want to give a couple shout-outs to Eric Clamott and Harold Swanger. When we, as a board, decided to go virtual for our students, they helped a family who had just turned their hotspot in and uh, were four kids crazy wondering if they were going to be able to get their hotspot in time so we could go virtual and those two made sure that it happened. So that is wonderful. And um, I want to also recognize Mr. Jermaine at the high school. I, I work at Neil Reed High School for the ISD and we share a student um, with Richmond High School. And when we went virtual, um, this student who comes to the high school, he's integrated because of how our schedule is here in Richmond and interfered with his schedule, leaving Neil Reed. Mr. Jermaine put the most amazing plan together for this student so that he would be taken care of. He doesn't get to Richmond till after one o'clock, but um, he just, he made videos. He um, rearranged his afternoon schedules so that if this student needed help and it's just outstanding. Um, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough thing that we're going through and for someone to go above and beyond, I just want to say thank you. It's, he's a great kid that Mr. Jermaine took care of and, and I appreciate it in a whole lot of ways. And then I just want to um, ask, I know that we, we had our workshop, however, many months ago, and I have talked with Deb. Um, and while I, I appreciate everyone's comments about communication and that for Mr. Wamsley, I agree with all of that, but I think that goes both ways. And I think we have to communicate better um, through emails, um, sitting at the board table, all those kind of things. Um, it's not Mr., just Mr. Wamsley who has to be at a high level. And so I'm looking, I think we need to do a workshop that is a true superintendent board working goals, figuring out how, how we can be more productive and be more professional and courteous towards each other. And I have talked to you about that before, Deb, so I just wanted to say it in front of everybody. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Teltow. Mr. Simmons?
I got nothing.
Okay. Um, I have nothing this evening either, so we're going to go to our action items. We're going to, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to amend the COVID nineteen learning plan because we are amending it, right? Ms. Wamsley? Because we're changing back from.
That's, that, that was going to be my question. It doesn't say in either one of these about the fact that we're going back in person, May third, on either one of these sample resolutions. Shouldn't it somewhere or no?
What I would recommend you do, because you're technically, your plan right now is virtual.
Okay.
When we left in, in the eight, the, the twelfth, our target was to return May third, but there was no definitive that we were going to, we were going to look at. But that was the target. So I would amend it and make the statement to return to in-person
Okay.
On May third, because your current plan is virtual right now. That would be my recommendation.
Hey, does anybody want to give that a try?
So is it option one or option two?
Option one.
Option one, because we're amending it.
I motion. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as presented in the attached documentation and improve the amendment to the COVID nineteen learning plan as discussed with those amendments discussed, considered and directed by the Board of Education at the April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one board meeting. The action amends how instruction is to be delivered, provided an opportunity for parents and/or guardians to provide public comment on the plan and reported the weekly two-way interaction rates. And will be scheduled to return to in-person learning on May third, two thousand twenty-one.
While still offering a virtual option.
Still offering a virtual option for those students interested.
Yes, yes.
Support.
Good job.
Did you support?
It was over there.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I am looking for a motion for the approval of media center.
Whoops. I can read it. I have motioned to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to school specialty for media center furniture at the Richmond Middle School for an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent has authorized or is authorized to approve Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent has authorized or is authorized to approve. Change orders on the projects that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools. For which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
I have support.
Support.
Is that sharing?
Yeah.
This is a roll call vote. Danielles?
Any discussions? I just wanted to clarify the board. I don't anticipate this change in the dollar value. Other than when they get on site and do the field measuring and they got maybe a just or different shells because of where pillows are and so forth. Otherwise it's pretty much they took the architect's drawing and built the plan around the architect's drawing. So, um, I anticipate it to stay at that sixty five thousand.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Is there any other discussion? Okay. This is a roll call vote. Miss?
Yes.
Ms. Zuby?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mrs. Pacito?
Aye.
Mrs.?
Aye.
Mrs. Talto?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Will turn at nine thirty.
Eight thirty one.
Eight, eight.
Eight.
Nine thirty, nine thirty one.
Eight thirty one.
Sorry, eight thirty one. Don't rush it, guys.